...that we are going to read aloud.
Whereas, John T. Tippett has served on the Board of Trustees of the Alamo Heights Independent School District from May 16th, 2013 to May 16th, 2019 with great distinction and...
Whereas, during his tenure, Mr. Tippett at various times served as President, Vice President, Secretary, Assistant Secretary, Chair of various committees including Audit, Building, Communications, Goals and Priorities, Investment, Long Range Planning, and Nominate, School Health Advisory Committee, as well as the School Board representative to the Alamo Heights School Foundation, and Superintendent's Election Committee.
Whereas, the contributions of Mr. Tippett through his hard work, spreadsheet genius, encouragement, attention to detail, succinct feedback, positive attitude, insight, and composure under pressure have been exceptional and will be felt by the Alamo Heights Independent School District for many, many years to come.
Whereas, the special characteristics brought by Mr. Tippett to the Board have included compassion, integrity, warmth, mentorship, professionalism, and an infectious positive attitude, and...
Whereas, Mr. Tippett's dedication, reassuring presence, good humor, and powerful devotion to serving the needs of our schoolchildren as a school board member will be greatly missed by his fellow trustees and by the district he loves, and... Now, therefore, we have resolved the Alamo Heights Independent School District Board of Trustees thanks and commends John Tippett for his invaluable service, devotion, and leadership while serving on the school board. His dedication to public service is truly extraordinary. We wish him well in his future endeavors as a devoted patron of Alamo Heights Independent School community and friend and advocate of Texas Public Schools.
Thank you.
For John, we have to remember we should be grateful. I'm just trying to say it personally, so grateful for your... Go get your picture, so you don't have to concentrate on that. You're good. So again, incredibly grateful for your leadership, for your service. I truly believe in my heart that Alamo Heights ISD is a better district today because of John's service and so in a lot of my heart. Appreciate John. No, I'm a little stuck.
Just a quick, a lot of thanks, but I'm gonna keep it short because there's obviously a lot of kids who want, recognize, but I was thinking about this morning, is we spent a lot of time, and I'm guilty of this as well, focused on kind of national political stuff, and obviously it's pretty interesting, but when you think about it, this doesn't really impact us, it's so local. You know, police being set in their houses, fire department in roads, and most of all, I mean, any community is, if it's schools are good, and that's the key, and so having been able to work with a group of people, the administration, the Board, the teachers are so focused on that part, has been really special for me. And it, a lot of decisions that kind of get to this level, and I want to commend the Board and administration Board, is, you know, the kind of ones that are 80% of parents like and 20% don't, or those kind of things, those kind of resolve themselves up along the path, but, and Dana, you and your team really deal with the 51-49% stuff, and those are really hard, and it takes a lot of courage, and I want to commend you guys for that, because I think you really, my kids are here, and I feel very trusted that they go to school here, so I just want to thank you guys for that, and keep doing great work, and I'll be your biggest supporter, and a special thanks to the teachers, this community, because it really is the lifeblood of our community without it. It's not a community without it, so a big thanks for that. I'm also sincerely proud of you guys, and I want to see what that feels like to see this in action, and my son told me about five minutes ago, I got basketball, I got a baseball guy out there, so I had a great night.
At this time, we're going to get to Section Two, the Organization of the Trustees, and I would now like to hand it over to Emma Sanchez, who will administer the Oath of Office to a newly elected Board of Trustees. Before we do, we vote on the resolution. Sorry about that. We need to vote on the resolution that we just asked on John, so do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So...
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, pay the motion here, it's, thank you very much. Well, we are now going to move on to Section Two, and I'm going to turn it over to Emma, who will administer the Oath of Office to Brian Hamilton and David Hornberger.
Okay, if you would please stand, and repeat, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, I'm Brian.
Dusamely swear or affirm...
Dusamely swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
...of the Office of Trustee...
Of the Office of Trustee.
...for the Alamo Heights Independent School District...
For the Alamo Heights Independent School District.
...and will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
...preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
...the Constitution and laws of the United States...
Constitution and laws of the United States.
...and, and of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
Thank you, and congratulations to Brian and David, glad to be on the Board, Brian. We will now leave to consideration the Board Officers, the President, Vice President, Secretary, and Assistant Secretary. By way of background, in our district, we have a long-standing tradition of rotating Board Officers annually, which we see as a very important governance tool. It provides some important checks and balances, and it spreads out the institutional knowledge and skill sets across the trustees, which prevents one Board Member from going too dependent or influencing other members. It also keeps us on our toes, and the administration on their toes, each year, because we each have new areas of responsibility and new people to interact with, which may incur... If you have the same people every year, you would start relying on those same people every year, so it's great that we do that, and we're becoming unique in doing that. So for this upcoming school year, starting this evening, the new officers under consideration are President Lisa Ringer, Vice President Perry Schenkel, Secretary David Hornberger, and Assistant Secretary Brian Anderson. We will, we need to vote on the appointment of new officers, which at this point, these individuals will assume their new roles for the remainder of the meeting tonight and through next May. So at this time, do I have a motion to approve these officers?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the motion, there it is. Now, Lisa and I are going to switch seats. As Margaret is switching, I am going to recognize Margaret, her ear has an president, we're very thankful for her leadership, I'd love you all to throw a applause.
Well, the best thing about this is I have a better angle on everybody, so thank you, I'm excited to take over as Board President, and I'm really excited that Margaret gave me this cheat sheet for my first night. So, now, we're going to move on to the committee assignments that everybody has in their folder, and again, just as Margaret said about the positions, we rotate our committee assignments as well, just to keep a fresh opinion on, and ideas on all the different committees, so those are in your folders. Now, we're going to move on to our delegations and recognitions, so I'm going to turn it over to...
Do you want to read, just off the record?
Oh.
Do you have it?
Nope. Here you go. I would love to read these committee assignments.
Oh, so...
Okay, so the committee assignments are, the School Foundation representative will be Perry Schenkel, Assessment and Long Range Planning is Bonnie Giddens, Budget Committee is Margaret Judson, the Audit Committee has three members, myself, David Hornberger, and Bonnie Giddens, the Investment Committee has two members, Perry Schenkel and Brian Hamilton, the Building Committee is three people, Bonnie Giddens, Perry Schenkel, and David Hornberger, Communications Committee is Margaret, Goals and Priorities is myself, Legislative Committee is Margaret, Nominations Committee is Perry, Policy Review Committee is Ryan Anderson, the District Education Advisory Council is Ryan Anderson, and then we have two other, not official committees, but other assignments, that's the District Design Team, I'll have to turn that over to David, unfortunately.
I'm excited.
Hey, give that up.
Yeah, no, that'll be neat.
And then Strategic Action is Brian Hamilton and myself. So now, we'll turn it over to Dana, actually, you can...
So, May brings us so much joy, and the celebrations that we're honoring tonight for these outstanding students and staff members that are going to come before, so I'm going to turn the microphone over to Frank, who will lead us through those celebrations, but this is a great night, we appreciate all of the, those of you in the audience who are here to celebrate someone special, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Bouchere, Rose London is my lovely assistant, ready over there to get things rolling. Well, like Dr. Bouchere said, thank you all for being here to honor each of our recognis tonight. I would ask that everyone stay for the duration of the recognitions, so that we can make sure that everybody, even the last ones, get a large crowd. Now, what's going to happen is they'll come through, they'll get recognized, we'll say nice things about them, we'll all clap, and then they'll get a token for our appreciation, and they'll be huddled in the back there, so there'll be a ton of students back there, and we've asked them to kind of keep it down, once we get rolling, so that everybody can hear what else is being recognized. So, that's the way we're going. Our first recognition is one that we do every month, it's called Spotlight on Excellence, in which we like to shine a spotlight on someone who often works behind the scenes to help maintain our tradition of excellence, but often goes unnoticed. And so, tonight's Spotlight on Excellence goes to our Human Resources Coordinator, Max Flores, come on down. So, Max is going to hold this while I say nice things about him. Max started in the district as an Assistant Principal at the junior school, in which he was beloved by kids, even those that got in trouble, and, but, was at the junior school for several years, and then became our district's Human Resources Coordinator. And as you can imagine, in Human Resources, you're both recruiting people, but you're also helping to support people who have personnel issues and that kind of thing, and Max quickly became beloved in that role as well. He's a great listener, he's calm, he's objective, and he's supportive. Now, he's been doing that for years, and working quietly behind the scenes. When this year, our high school had a staffing shortage, and we needed to have one of our Assistant Principals move into a teaching role to help get us through the school year, Max stepped into it and put on his old Assistant Principal hat. So, for the past semester, Max has been doing his job in Human Resources, but he's also been helping out the high school as an Assistant Principal. And one of the great things that you saw about that was that a lot of the students he had at the junior school were excited to see him, they're like, "Hey, hey, what are you doing back here, Mr. Flores, at the high school?" And so, this has been a tough, I mean, he's really worked hard, and he's helped us to do double duty and hasn't missed a beat. And so, it's for that and all the other things that Max has done behind the scenes, he is, and you can tell he kind of looks like me, a lot of us, you know, they call me Frank, they call me Max, but Max has been very integral to our team, and he's very deserving of the Spotlight on Excellence. So, Max, congratulations. I also want to recognize Max's wife, who's sitting there, wait, guys. Thank you for sharing him with us, I know he is with us probably a lot more than you wish he was. You're on, thanks a lot, man. Our next recognition is a regular section that we call Hypes Happening, and we try to, we feature some videos that have been that was done or featured in local news media over the last month or so. And so, sometimes this might be something that Patty Girls Window or Self Do an House, but quite often, something gets covered by the local news media. And I will show you tonight's Hypes Happening first, and then I'll explain how it really ties to our profile of a learner. Emma?
It's so simple, it's brilliant. The idea of a high school class at Alamo Heights using their own ideas to come up with the world's next big idea.
When they come into our room, we want them to feel like they have left school.
The program is called the Hypes Business Incubator, the first of its kind in the local public schools.
We want it to feel like real world, we want to get real one experience. Everything that they learn, they apply immediately to their business idea.
No homework, no tests, and no limits.
When I first signed up for the class, I saw the Business Incubator, so I needed, it was like, oh, another business class that'll be ready for college, but definitely a week into it, I was like, whoa, this is like way cooler than I even thought.
Cool for sure, progressive, no doubt. The question, will it be revolutionary? Here's how it works.
You think an idea, you put all the pieces together, finances, marketing, tactics, what's the problem, what's your solution, and then basically, program it up, you make a startup, and you turn it into something.
Running a jar for a number of companies, what I saw was people that had these kinds of skills to be able to take initiative, to pitch an idea, to be able to learn those lessons as early as high school, I think it's fantastic.
The class is made up of 38 teams, all pitching their next big idea to community business leaders.
Some of these are really revolutionary, new kind of products that do not exist.
That's for sure. They come up with an app for airport food delivery, teen tutoring, Uber for kids, there's even an idea for something called Glamping, what you call it?
Glamping.
Glamping.
So, it's kind of like glamorous camping.
Senior Katie Dever thought of something called Tiny Towns USA, tiny mobile homes used for camping in national parks.
Who wants to go and set a steak, and your type of breaks, or did you tackle the radio here? What if there was a way to go to the national park and camp, and get the idea of camping and lodging in one, one way, Glamping, if you will?
The winner gets $10,000 to help get their idea up and running, but ask any student in class, they'll tell you they want experience that money can't buy.
We have different mentors and coaches come in who do this every day of their life, and they say, "Look, I'm going to teach you what it really means to market the world, I'm not going to give you textbooks to read about what marketing is, I'm going to let you do marketing."
Often, it feels like these are not high school students, and that's what we want people to feel like when they see them, and that's what we want to give them when they walk away, is the confidence that they're someone's really real world problems, and whatever they go on to do after this, they have that confidence in their life.
The finalists were announced last week, Katie's Tiny Towns USA, that idea unfortunately did not meet the cut, but something did that sounds very curious, it's called Spice Strips, it's a pain relief strip that you put inside your mouth to help you cope with spicy food. Interesting. The winner of the Hypes Business Incubator program is announced this Friday. Be sure to watch the evening break every Monday for the best stories from area public schools, and be sure to follow Go Public on social media, @LEGoPublic, I'm David Chance on News 4 Center. Wow, wasn't that cool? So, we're also, we're also very thankful to David Chance, who's a great supporter of public schools, and that exemplifies the profile of a learner in a lot of ways. Seeking knowledge and understanding, communicate and collaborate, thinking critically and creatively, engaging socially and globally, and employing skills for life. And so, as he mentioned, we had a piece like a couple weeks ago, it was a great sensation, and so that's what's happening tonight. Ready for the next one? Student Council. All right, our next recognition, Student Council State Honors from Alamo Heights High School, come on down. Their sponsor, obviously, is not going to roll down. So, tell us who you are, what grades you're in, and then we'll talk a bit more about your honors.
I'm Katherine, I'm a senior, and I'm a Vice President.
I'm Beryl Abbott, I'm a senior and I'm Vice President.
I'm Lucy Williamson, I'm a junior, and I'm going to be President next year.
Andrew Walton's the sponsor up there, we'll talk more about him in a minute. Now, you all won a slew of awards, including the Alamo Association Honor Council, right, the local one. In terms of the State Honors, you got Outstanding Student Council Award, Pride and Patriot's an award, Energy and Environment Award, Drugs, Alcohol, Safety and Health Issues Award, and the Community Service Award. Tell us a little about what you guys do to get all of these awards.
So, it's like, for community service, people will volunteer to help clean up the junior law, or just, we kind of like, like, we'll, like, tell them what things that they can do to help, and then we write up in binders, and then at the state convention, we... We have a meeting every year where we collect all of our binders and count all the points to see if we qualify for any of the awards, all that he named. And so, under each binder, we create different projects to where we can get the points to get the award, and when we get over a certain amount of the points necessary, then that's all.
I know you guys do a ton of work, so congratulations. Now, another award we're going to recognize is the guy sitting up stage, their sponsor, Andrew Walton, Spanish teacher at high school, was actually selected by his peers in the Alamo area of all the student council sponsors, nominated and chosen to be the Student Council Advisor of the Year for this, for the Alamo area, so let's give Andrew a round of applause. Andrew, would you like to say anything about this wonderful group?
Oh, yeah, so, they, they were, they, they do the work, it's called Student Council. Yeah, we have the commission to do it, but I really, I think, I got the work, I got the award really because of them, so it's, it's, it's really all of them, so thank them.
All right, one more round of applause. Our next recognition is for the Spurs Dance Team, State Honors, Alamo Heights High School, come on down. They wanted to do a high kicks down, but we thought maybe the steps might be a bit too heavy. Yeah, two of those.
Keep going.
That's why we're going to do the high kick routine. All right, so, what I'm going to do, ladies, is give the mic to you, you tell us what your name is, what grade you're in, and you're going to pass the mic all the way down to be prepared, and we're going to end with your sponsor at the end of it. Ready?
Hi, I'm Lucy Gibbs, I'm a junior, so I'm in 11th grade, and I'm the major.
Hi, I'm Rachel, I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Emma, I'm a junior, and I'm First Lieutenant.
Hi, my name is May, and I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth, I'm a junior, and I'm a Second Lieutenant.
Hi, I'm Lexi, I'm a senior, and I'm a line leader.
Hi, I'm Charlotte, I'm a senior, and I'm a line leader as well.
Hi, I'm Joy, I'm a senior, and I'm a veteran.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann, I'm a senior, and I'm a line leader.
Hi, I'm Adina, I'm a senior.
Hi, my name is Julia Garcia, I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Julia Beebe, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Laura Viner, and I'm a sophomore.
My name is Haley Cuday, I'm a sophomore.
My name is Ziva Dance, I'm a sophomore.
Hi, I'm Kai, I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Sophia, I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm John, I'm a junior.
I'm Chris Jonasiz, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Kira, I'm a freshman, and I'm a freshman.
Hello, I'm Brady, and I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Al Jamara, I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Amy Dickerson, I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Victoria, and I'm a Seventh Lieutenant.
My name is Fred, and I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Amy, I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Lea, I'm a freshman.
Hello, I'm Emily Nessa, I'm a lieutenant colonel.
Hi, I'm Sadie, I'm a shared, and I'm a colonel.
Hello, my name is Jessica Marisantos, and I'm the driver.
Wow, let's just clap for getting through that whole thing. If you were a parent in this group, can you stand up just so we can give you guys a round of applause? I know you guys can defend this group. Parents is first, yep? They were a very independent group. Now, so, the Showmakers of America, Texas State Championship, these folks garnered a ton of awards. If we try to hit some highlights, maybe we can do a little, let's see. They've got individual awards, say to make sure, they got a solo award, that's for division one ranking, small officer ensemble, they got first place, team judge boards, best in showmanship in all four categories, open clog, pom, contemporary, and hip hop. High historical choreography in open clog, pom, contemporary, and hip hop, outstanding technique in open clog, and they also earned best in category honors in their division, first place for open clog, second place in hip hop, third place in contemporary, third place in pom. They were best in class, state winners third place, line of champions, state winners, third place, wow. Let's clap a little more loudly for this group. I know you all certainly appreciate all the hard work you've sponsored us. Jessica Marie, so would you say a few words about this group?
So, this group rises from freshmen through seniors, and to see them come in every single day and give 110%, and just come with a positive attitude, and they just give 100% every single practice, is amazing. I mean, each single practice, they are working hard. But the one thing that I'm most important, most important that I'm proud of is the amount of growth that I see within these girls, ranging from freshman to seniors, and having a sophomore or, or freshman or sophomore, and then senior, senior, it's just amazing. So, that's the ones that I'm super proud of. The awards, yes, great job, but I'm very proud of the amount of growth that I see in them.
Thank you, guys, thank you for coming on back, I appreciate it, and hang out there in the back where we keep going. Thanks for being here. Make sure we go choreograph, we'll dance, just a little flash mob. Next, we have the Alamo Heights High School JROTC National Drill Team Winners. Come on in, give them a round of applause. So, we're going to do the drill team first, we've got the Cyber Patriots over here, we're going to talk about the drill team separately, but we'll do the Cyber Patriot in a second. So, actually, I should have come earlier to the end, we're going to do the same thing. Tell us who you are, what grade you're in, pass the mic to the end, and we'll talk about your drill team competition.
I'm Cadet Captain Harley Bellis, and I've been in the program for three years.
All right, to my right is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Lizeth Lopez, she is our battalion commander and has commanded a color guard team in the past three years. She is also the commander of our second place, national winning color guard team. I am Cadet Captain Rafika Azam, I have commanded a color guard team in the past two years, and in this recent year, I have been the color guard captain.
Hi, I'm Cadet First Lieutenant Drillage, because I've been on the drill team for two years, and I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Cadet Sergeant First Class Mary Fowler, I've been in the drill team for two years, and I've been the color guard commander for one year.
Hi, I'm Cadet Kelly Smith, and I've been on the drill team for two years, so I'm a sophomore.
Hi, I'm Cadet Staff Sergeant Jessica Patel, and I've been on the drill team for two years, and...
Hello, I'm Cadet Corporal Evelyn Gonzalez, and this is my first year on the drill team.
Well, if you guys have been coming over here to talk a little bit, so, tell us who you are, and these, by the way, second place national champs in color, right, building club. So, tell us a little bit more about that, give them a round of applause.
Well, I'm First Sergeant Jasper Millen, I'm a coach of the drill team and the cyber team. What you may not know is that these, these young cadets, they are committed to being excellent. They practice six o'clock every morning, whether it's PT or drill, and their commitment level is extremely high. I am so proud of them because we had a mix of juniors, seniors, sophomores, and she is the only freshman on the team. So, I am really proud of them for the achievements that they accomplished this year. This is the first time we had opportunity to move up and level. Uh, this is the first time we had opportunity to move up and level. That's the highest level you can compete at, and I was really, really, uh, pleased that we finished second overall in color guard by one point. I missed it all one point.
Yay. Now, as Sergeant Miller told you, in addition to being very busy with the drill team color guard, the Cyber Patriot team's been very busy as well. So let's see who's here for now, let's learn what they want. Tell us your name and your grade and pass it like that.
Hi, I'm Cadet First Sergeant Proveney. I'm a junior, and this is my third for the team.
Um, I'm Cadet Captain Cooper Ritz. I'm a senior, and I've been in ROTC for four years.
Hi, I'm Cadet Command Sergeant Major John Merrill, and I've been in ROTC for four years, the Cyber Patriot for four years as well.
Hello, my name's, uh, Cadet, excuse me. Hello, I'm Cadet Major John Hendricks. I'm the team captain for Cyber Patriot Team. This is my third year competing in Cyber Patriot.
Hi, I'm Cadet Captain Sasha Akina. This is my fourth year in ROTC and my third year on the Cyber Patriot Team.
I'm the Cadet Colonel Victor Diaz. I am senior army instructor in charge of these outstanding, uh, young Americans, also the assistant coach. This is my first year in Alamo Heights High School, and I'm blessed. Uh, I had the pleasure to accompany the Cyber team between Baltimore, Maryland, and just seeing them in operation and what they did. And, uh, the one thing here, uh, First Sergeant, I've done a great job, is that, it's really more noteworthy about the First Sergeant Patriot Team is that they were the second best team in the all service, which involves the Army, the Air Force. Uh, they placed second among 1,600 other teams, uh, nationwide, and that just often be their, once again, the outstanding job they're national, so once again, it was a great, great pleasure to be with them up in Baltimore.
And here's the, uh, congratulations. Our next recognition is for the high school journalism folks. They have a slew of awards. Come on down, I'll start saying them. Come on down. We've got, um, the UIL achievement for the footprint 2019 newspaper staff of the high school. They got the state solo better publishing. We've also got the UIL award distinguished merit and yearbook, yearbook award for the almost the yearbook staff of the high school. Let's see who's here on this center.
Hello, my name is Vivian Phillips. I'm a junior, and I'm the news editor of the footprint.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Fernandez. I'm a senior, and I'm the features editor for the footprint.
Hi, I'm Ashley Castro. I'm a senior, and I'm the co-editor for the footprint.
Hi, I'm Lloyd Javellet. I'm a senior, and I'm one of the co-editors of the yearbook.
Hi, I'm Jordan Minnis. I'm a senior, and I am the Photoshop editor for the yearbook.
My name is James Harden, and I'm on the sports staff of the yearbook.
Uh, I'm Brian Anderson. I'm a senior, and I'm co-editor of the footprint. I also wanted to say Ms. Kate can't be here tonight. She had a family emergency, but she really wanted to be here, and she sent her away.
As well said, you know, Ms. Kate does a great job leading these, uh, these teams. And so, I wanted to say that, uh, you guys have won the state, the UIL award distinguished merit for the 11th straight year, and the Ball Four Publishing Yearbook, Yearbook Award, which is a national award recognizing the best yearbooks in it, from elementary college for the 13th straight year in a row. So let's give these folks a round of applause. There you go. Um, uh, so I did neglect on that last one for the journalism folks. Journalism parents here, could you wave at us? Wave out a version of "Proud of You Guys." Thank you for being here. Now, this is a strings instrument he has on him, and so I imagine this is our Alamo Heights High School State Solo and Ensemble Awards for Strings. Folks, let's see who's here. Uh, say your name, your grade, and pass the mic that way, and end with your fearless leader.
I'm Claudia Mendible Diaz, and I'm a freshman, and I play the violin.
My name is Lynn Humphries. I'm a freshman, and I play the bass.
My name is Sophia Carroll. I'm a sophomore, and I play the cello.
Uh, so these are some of the students that we had advanced to, um, the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Competition held, um, next weekend at UT Austin, um, which is an event that they say some 25,000, uh, students attend, um, and, um, and two of these ladies are, um, participating in this contest. They all advanced, as well as a number of our other students. Um, and advancing is not, not an easy task. They have to perform a class one solo, which is the most difficult class of solo form memory, um, in the case of solo works, and, um, and we had a bull league. We had eight achieve that distinction this year, um, and, um, and to have younger players do that especially, it's a really, uh, it's a great testament to workability and, um, uh, their seriousness with their instruments. So, congratulations.
Of course, we also want to thank you for calling, lighting their leader. I know you put a ton of work into helping these students, as well as the parents. We'll have the parents of these strings folks standing, we recognize. Sorry, so holler. Thank you all, congratulations. Rose Lynn is going to hook you up with a little token of our appreciation. Come on down. Our next recognition is Alamo Heights High School State Band Color Guard and Twirling Awards. Come on down. I think this is a long way to go there. Yes, keep on trucking, keep on trucking. So if you'll tell us your name, your grade, and pass the mic down, we'll end here with your leader.
I'm Emily Blaze. I'm a junior, and I play the flute.
I'm Dezzis Calz. I'm a junior, and I also play the flute.
I'm Lary Yonso. I'm a sophomore, and I also play the flute.
I'm Leah Vasquez. I'm a sophomore, and I'm a twirling.
I'm Auguste King, I'm reading. I'm a sophomore, and I play the clarinet.
I'm Autumn Varoski. I'm a freshman, and I play the saxophone.
I'm Emily May. I'm a senior, and I'm a twirler and saxophone.
My name is Abby Golden, and I'm a freshman, and I play the French horn.
Uh, my name is Brandon Verlone. I'm a senior, and I'm a percussionist.
My name is Angie Guevara. I'm a senior, and I play, um, percussionist.
Uh, and you may expect Lozano. I'm a senior, and I'm also a percussionist.
I'm David Gu. I'm a freshman, and I'm a percussionist.
My name is Abby Jones. I'm a sophomore, and I'm also a percussionist.
My next to me is Shang Bang. I'm a junior, and I'm a percussionist.
I'm Michael Sars. I'm a senior. I play the saxophone.
Hello, my name is Scott. I play trombone. I'm a senior at the Alamo Heights High School, and I'll be going to state.
I'm Joseph Mike Pino. I'm a freshman, and I play the French horn.
I'm Randy Jones. I'm a sophomore, and I play the trombone.
I'm Travis Butts. Uh, I'm a junior, and I play the bass trombone.
Hello, my name is Angela Sarredvius, and I'm one of the assistant band directors.
And I'm David Stevenson. I'm one of the band directors, and we also have Amber Childers, who could not be here tonight as one of the directors as well. Uh, just to explain, and I'm with that, Mr. Maniki already talked about this, so I don't want to repeat too much of what he said, but really proud of these kids for qualifying for the state solo and ensemble competition. As a soloist, having to perform such a high level and a very difficult solo by memory and playing it at a certain level, these are, uh, and ensemble as well, they don't have to play it by memory, but the playing together, the chamber music part of it with no conductor, uh, and working on this, these guys have worked these solos and ensembles literally on their own, um, and have done just a fabulous job. It's a real honor to get to that level. So these kids have an opportunity. Again, they're going for a rating. They're not competing against other individuals or other groups, but they're going for a rating. And there's also an opportunity to get what's called an outstanding performer award. It's the same level, UIL treats it the same level, um, as the, and the same medals that, as any other group that wins states with a football team, or to win state, or when they won state, or the soccer team, or various groups that have already won state, um, they get the same medal. It's on that same level. So these kids are working toward that, not just to hit the medal, but to perform at such a high level, uh, and, and take those abilities. So really proud of, of what they've done.
You and I always know how much we appreciate you and all your support and you give to the students. And so speaking of who are the parents, let's tell them, wave at us. So the appreciation, you guys. Regulate. Don't regulate.
Yeah, don't regulate.
We'll have a contest to see if you can recognize which student was in a former group. And if we recognize, and this next group, our next recognition is our state choir rewards. Tell us who's here, your grade, and we'll pass the mic to the left.
I'm Julie McKnight, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Nate Smith, and I'm a senior.
I'm Travis Butts, again, and, uh, I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Linda Wilson, and I work with these students in the choir and have the honor to accompany most of our, most of the band and orchestra students and the students that are going to state.
I'm Alexis McLeod, choir director, also at, uh, high school. And, uh, just a pleasure to work with these kids, who are just great. We have about seven of the kids that aren't with us tonight. Uh, it's, it's a one thing I would say that maybe David didn't mention, or call it. Uh, this contest for state offers over 20,000 kids participating in this music contest. So just to put that in perspective, it's a statewide contest, and it's true sense, and it's drawing kids from all the far corners of our state. And so that's an amazing fact, that these kids are one of those 20,000 of many, many more thousands that, that work. And then in the region level where they receive their first division or class one solo, they get to advance to state because of that first division. And then at state level, they're, they're usually judged by college level teachers in their performance area of instrument or voice or ensembles. And so it's, it's a real, um, challenge. I tell most of my students that if they got one at region, they should expect a three at state possibly, because at the level, the bar is raised that much more. So we seem to do quite well, all, all of our programs. So just want to give you that background.
So Angela, Samantha, you know how much we appreciate you and all you do to support our students. Uh, and speaking of supporting parents of the choir folks, wave at us. Yes. Thank you all. From the Yards Athletics, we're now celebrating our Alamo Heights High School State Track Athletes. Come on down. So we'll do, they got students first, and then we'll do their adult coaches. Tell us who you are, what grade you're in, and how you, and what you did at state.
I'm Melanie Fickers. I'm a junior at the high school, and in shot, I play fifth. The fourth quarter. 400 fifth, and the one last.
Hi, I'm Maggie Carrabin, and I, uh, threw shot with a discus at the state track meet, and I placed fifth in both, and I'm a senior.
Hi, my name is Linda Varoski. I'm a senior, and I play seventh at state in Colton.
Third, this guy tells us, he was a coach, he could coach a little bit about graphic, and we'll pass it to the adults, and then with the ball, we're going to end.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Williams. Um, I got the privilege to work with Melanie this season, and we've had a lot of fun. She's, she, we've had a really good time this season, and she's worked really hard. Uh, it's her third time at the state, so that's really awesome. So, good job. Super proud of you.
Uh, I'm Randy Osborne, the head, uh, track coach up at the high school, and I'm just going to talk a little bit about Maggie. I could talk for a long time tonight. Uh, if you were at the award ceremony last night, I think his, uh, his, uh, introduction went on for about five minutes with all the accomplishments he has. But as he, as we said earlier, he, uh, placed fifth in the shot and discus at the state track meet, and, uh, just a tremendous accomplishment. The state track meet in Texas is the, uh, second largest track meet in the entire nation. Um, so it's just a huge accomplishment for him. But on top of that, uh, I've known Maggie for a long time. I've watched him grow up from Little League baseball and stuff, and, uh, he embodies all the values and qualities that us as coaches preach to our kids every day. Um, I cannot say enough about him. He's a, uh, four-year veteran in both football and track, and, uh, he's just a tremendous kid, and so I appreciate everything he's done, and I wish all athletes look like him, um, but he's just a tremendous kid, and we're going to miss him here at Alamo Heights, and he'll be moving on, uh, to play football at La Tech next year. First of all, it's a privilege to speak on the lady's behalf. It's also been an honor to coach her for years. She's kind of earned the same kind of qualities that the big, but we'd like to see how, of the halls at Alamo Heights, she's definitely embodied, uh, the same type of character we see in Nike Carrabin. Uh, in four years, I think she's cumulated about 300-plus points. That's a lot of first and second in competition in four years of golf. Uh, she has been an area qualifier for all four years since her freshman year, as well as a regional qualifier. As a senior, she won district first place. She also placed first in the area and placed second in regionals, allowed her to move on to the state where she placed, uh, seventh. Um, besides those accolades, the state of, uh, the, our association at the state of Texas, when they hand, and I will present this to her right now, it's a certificate, uh, because this young lady academically, as well as athletically, is given, uh, Texas High School Coaches Association, uh, has awarded later the Academic First Team All-State Team of 2018. She's obviously, uh, a member or associated with our rocketry program, uh, where it has been very impressive, watch her fabricate different parts of a rocket. She's, uh, fixing the talent of talents to Texas A&amp;M in the mechanical engineering dominance program. So again, we're talking about someone that I believe, in my opinion, is an epitome of what we like to see as products of Alamo Heights, so. Her business has been doing well for 40 years. I, I did, sorry, I forgot something to say about Maggie. Um, he is so Alamo Heights, just to let you all know, he just purchased a mule. Now, I don't know what his mom's going to do with it, because he's going off the calendar, but he did just purchase a mule. You can see pictures of it later.
Speaking of his mom, we have parents of these athletes here, give us a wave. Congratulations, guys. Good token there of your appreciation. Speaking of state, hey, that's a, he did a good job. He's pretty shy normally. Next, we have our Alamo Heights High School State Girls Golf Team. Come on down. Now, tell us what your name is, what grade you're in, and pass the mic to the way with your coach, and he's going to tell us a little bit about his team.
Hi, I'm Ella Williams, and I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Jacobi Gonzalez, and I'm also a freshman.
I'm Jordan Salty, and I'm a sophomore.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Loeh, I'm a junior. Hi, I'm Kimberly Vormer, and I'm a senior.
Good evening. My name is Springer Kristen, and I have the honor of driving the van for these young ladies. So we just, uh, we just finished a grade here. It's my first year here at Alamo Heights. Uh, all of these young ladies are very accomplished players. Uh, just to speak first about our senior Kimberly Vormer, uh, just found out today, she was awarded through the Texas High School Coaches Association. Uh, she's academic all-state. Uh, she is all-region, all-region. She is all-region, all-district. She finished second at district, third at region, or fourth. I don't remember, it was a long time ago. Third place at regionals, and has been just, without me naming her captain, she has led this team and a very, very big part of the reason that we have had the success we've had. All of these girls are all-district. We won district by 300 strokes. And for those that don't know golf, that's a lot. It's a big margin. We went to regionals and tied for first after the second day, went to a two-hole playoff and were able to beat Sherry Lamb on their home golf course. And that qualified us for the state tournament, which we just returned from Tuesday evening, in which we placed eighth. And that's our first trip to state in anybody's recent memory. So we were eighth at well, glad to be here.
Folks, we appreciate you, and then we have the parents of the golf folks here. Parents, thank you, yay. Congratulations, young ladies. Our final dedication and recognition is from our incoming president of the Alma Heights, student council, Lucy Williams. And Lucy, come on back down. Gibson, update what the high school student co's been doing.
So this past chapter in student council has been focused a lot on voting, and that's with class officers. We managed all the class officer votings, and then we also did student council elections. And before we did that, we went to Arlington, and we took all of the younger students there so that they could learn, they could bring in some ideas that they learned while at the convention to these next few years, so they'll be here. And we don't have any upcoming projects since we do that this year.
Congratulations on being the incoming president. Thank you so much for being here. Now, the coolly class, hurry up. If you're in the crowd, can you take a moment to turn around and look at everyone en masse and give these folks one more round of applause? Thank you, guys, for being here. You were great. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, however, this would be a great time to exit if you were here just a minute. Thank you, guys, for being here, I appreciate it. We're a great crowd, and you speak to the great job being a good audience for everyone else.
Okay, so as my first act as new president, I don't want to use that microphone anymore, so if y'all want to move up a little bit, because it's kind of operating.
She doesn't want to use the mic.
Frank likes the mic.
It makes me feel like I should sing, and y'all do not want me to sing. So if y'all don't mind moving down a little bit, then we can be a little more intimate and just talk in our normal voices. That's fine. Okay, so our next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard, and we do have one person. Are there any others that, anybody else that wants to address the board? So we have one, and before I ask Noel Murphy to come to the table, I just, a few rules, so to speak, the way that we conduct this is each person has three minutes to speak, and Emma's the timekeeper, and so she'll hold up a card when there's one minute left, and then another card when the time is up. When you make your presentation, we ask that you don't refer to any individual students or personnel by name or position. In addition, by state law, the board is not allowed to respond. So we are listening and know that we're listening, but we can't, we can't address you. We can't say anything back. And so we welcome your input. So we'll start with Mr. Murphy.
Hi, guys, thanks for your time. My name's Noel Murphy.
You want to have a seat, right?
My name's Noel Murphy. I'm a former teacher with the district. I was submitting my resignation earlier this year. I was confronted with a safety issue involving students at the high school, and I submitted my information to my administration, and I had the privilege to work with them closely, trying to solve some problems during the safety on campus, which is a major concern as an employee of the district. So I just wanted to share with you guys my notes, so that you had a full picture of what happened, and I don't want you to go over these, I just wanted to give it to you personally, and how you associate a person with this information. And again, there is no student names in this report. Dr. Alpharo has most of that information because he met with me privately, and we talked about concerns and went through all that information. So that's really all I need, is make sure you guys got that from me, and you associate it with an individual that's been with the district for 17 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We always appreciate hearing from the community and your support and engagement, our community members, is very, very important to us.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. Okay, so the next thing up is items for presentation or possible action. And we have a presentation from the district design team, and our presenter is Dr. Jimmy Walker. Come on down.
Hi, good evening. So I'm thrilled to be able to talk about the work this year from our district design team. I am also gonna say that this, so I'm the facilitator of it, but Lisa served on this team, Dr. Bashara is head of a writing team, Dr. Alpharo is head of a writing team. So as we go through, if any of them want to comment on this, that's absolutely fine, because I want to make sure we represent everyone's work really well. So what I'm gonna talk about tonight is we're just gonna briefly talk about how the district design team is different from other leadership teams in the district. We'll review the work that we did this year, and then shine a spotlight on some of the things we're gonna look at for next year. So one of the things that's unique about the district design team is its focus. So there's multiple leadership organizations in the school, but the district design team is made up of teachers, instructional coaches, administrators, board members, and we meet, it's 26 people in total, we only meet six times over the course of the year. So with that brain trust in the room, we try to be really judicious about the problems that we choose to tackle, and to make sure that the problems we're picking are focused on raising the vision of the district. And we talk about this with teachers, about the things that you pick to design are things that are difficult to teach and really hard to learn, that you need to dig into to find a unique solution. Well, the district design team does the same thing. We look for problems and challenges that are really difficult to understand and that can be hard to solve. And within this, it's this idea that, I think it was Einstein who said, if I have an hour to solve a problem, I'll spend 55 minutes thinking about the problem and five minutes thinking about the solution. So anytime we choose a challenge, we really try to focus on what is the challenge, how does it affect students, how does it affect teachers, how does it affect administrators, how does it affect parents? Because we would never want to inadvertently, in one solution, cause a ripple effect that ripples out to others. So we do this through something about understanding a problem through empathy, really understanding how a problem affects different groups, and also being clear about what the problem is. So we try to think really deeply before we take on a challenge. This year, we took on five, and I'll talk a little more specifically about them as we go on, but you can see the different projects that we took on, and you can see the different people that were leading these projects. Their names are in blue. Team members are listed below. So the first one I want to talk about is a unique opportunity in our district. This is partners for the profile, and this is the one that Lisa was a great leader on. That's her ear and her elbow, right there in that picture. But what's unique about this is this is really fostering two-way communication between our community and our district. And the best part about this, and what we hear repeatedly on feedback, is just the opportunity for our community to come in and see our classrooms and our teachers in action. Not to hear about it, but to be in there in the heartbeat of a school during the school day. So we did that through learning walks, where we took 39 community members into the high school. And then the second time we met, we got on a yellow school bus, and we went to the junior school, and we went to Cambridge. We had a teacher panel talking about the work they do in constructing engaging lessons. And then we also had presentations and table talk, and you can see how the tables are set up, so that whatever the topic was, it wasn't a sit-and-get, but it was meant to be two-way communication, so that we can hear feedback, share what we're doing at the same time. So we talked about how we went from profile of a learner to the engaged classroom. We talked about technology and screen time, and we talked about social-emotional learning, and we've talked about grading. So this is one piece of feedback. I believe this Alma Heights Profile of a Learner is so impressive and such a gift to the community. More parents need to see firsthand and learn about the process and how their children are being taught differently. They need to see and hear about this at the Howard Back-to-School Night, First Grade Woodridge, Sixth Grade Parent Night, and High School Ahead. So we just heard repeatedly how impactful it was to actually be a part of instruction when it went on in the classrooms. It's a great event. Lisa, you want to make any comments? Good?
The only comment I would make is that I've joked all year about how exciting it was to be on this committee, and that I had to wait until I was vice president to be on it. But it really is, it's such a, I just sat in awe. The first meeting I came to, I mean, the teachers, they take time out of their busy day, they all walked in with their iPads, I mean, their MacBooks, and flipped them open, I mean, they went to work immediately. And it's just such an impressive group. I was honored to sit in on it and say my two cents every now and then, so it was a really impactful experience for me.
So that was one of our first challenges. The second, there we go. This was a big lift. This is, so their picture of success or the goal that we're working for, listen to this. Students will choose an area of focus to develop a project to leave their mark on the world. That's a pretty lofty aspiration. So they did this by chopping it into two parts, one being an electronic portfolio that would really support student reflection on the work that they were doing and how their work connected to Profile of a Learner. So every student who's in the engaged classroom has an electronic portfolio where they save, then curate selected pieces of work that they want to reflect on, and then that builds year after year. So that lays the groundwork, and it's meant to be a reflection, a personal reflection of how they think that they're progressing. The other side is, again, it's the capstone. So it's for the student, but it's outward-facing. So a portfolio is like a mirror, a capstone's like a window. And this is a unique idea, because again, to get to leaving your mark on the world, in fourth grade, this would begin to look like, currently, we have a fourth-grade tug-of-war. Probably you guys have had kids go through this. And the event was shaped so that kids would be in Howard, and then they go into two campuses, and in fourth grade, they get the opportunity to kind of reconnect before they come back together in junior school. But the idea of this writing team is, what if we maintain that activity, but instead of being a tug-of-war, it becomes a day of service for our community? It would still achieve the purpose of helping students reconnect across the two campuses, but also help students experience what does it feel like to give back to the community? And then that lays the groundwork for, in eighth grade, instead of more of a teacher organized, it becomes small groups of students doing this level of service back to the community, which lays the groundwork for, in 11th grade, that's when this capstone would take place. So this is one of our writing projects that's not finished. Like, this is a big lift, but I'm really proud of this group and how they crafted a really nice vision for how our students can go from reflection to service and then leaving their mark on the world. Okay, there we go.
Wait, I have a quick question. Can you go back just one second? Promise it's quick. So, and I love this idea of like empowering the student to like choose where you want to focus and grow and that kind of thing. What if the area of personal growth or the significant achievement or whatever, like, it might not smash into Google Drive, right? So it's like a performance or a risk-taking opportunity where they spoke, or they served, or something like that? Like, how do we preserve that so that it can be?
That's a great question, and so we're really lucky that you can videotape a lot of things, where a student can video themselves describing, so a lot of things.
Or take photos of the art.
Exactly, exactly. But I also thank you also, because the capstone examples, some of the things that it might be, could be service, it could be action research. We have some of our science students doing beautiful research with fruit flies. So it may be that their capstone is a research project, it could be a meaningful experience for others, or it could be a fine arts project, and I like the idea that you can leave your mark on the world through writing or through the arts. So that's pretty neat.
Any other schools currently do like, I would say, like a similar?
No, we, Alma Heights, by it, but yes, multiple schools do some form of capstone. Community survey, you've heard me talk multiple times about our feedback February, but just a couple highlights here. Of course, our response rate went up 10%, but our open-ended response went up 53%, and we're incredibly grateful for the people that took the time to write, and how that pushes us towards analysis to action, and how we analyze all of that information, and it leads to concrete action, which is some of the talk that's going on on campuses right now. The fourth action item, Dr. Alpharo will be talking about in depth in just a moment, so I'm not gonna spend much time on it, but it did derive from the roots in district design team and their work to revamp our induction program for new employees.
My job never looks at fun, by the way.
The communications team, this is the team that Dr. Bashara led, and this is, it's a different take than some of the other teams, because it's the idea of how do we craft a consistent message about the engaged classroom? Because we've had it rolled out for multiple years, we've had multiple people be a part of the cohorts, so how are we consistent in explaining it to our community members in a way that makes sense? So they spent a lot of time crafting the message that would make sense, and one of the neat things that came out of this is Jamie, our director of technology, also lent his talents to this team, but they printed these small points. And it's a really nice way, it's kind of like a cheat sheet, if you will. They look like the Fiesta medals, and there's a picture of it right there. But by having this point, it means we can all talk about the engaged classroom, it's about changing the quality of experiences in school, so that the profile of a learner is realized, realized every day. And we do this through, and there's the four areas, and we support it by coaching. So it's a really nice way to have a tight message that's consistent for all about what the engaged classroom is about. Would you like to add anything to this?
Nothing other than just to put on the table that there have been misconceptions about what this has been since the start of the rollout. And what's nice about a responsible rollout plan is that you do get to respond. And what's nice about a responsible rollout plan is that you do get to respond to misconceptions, you get to tweak, and you get to fine-tune it every year. And that's what's made me so proud about the way that we've done it. The Engage Classroom is all about the Profile of a Learner. It's not about the use of one-on-one technology.
Absolutely.
And that's what needs to be on the table. It's about a very complex commitment to what we want our classrooms to look like, to prepare our students for their futures. And so, I don't want to be around the bush, that's what we talk about.
But having a consistent visual and having a consistent message helps us combat some of those misconceptions. They did really nice work. Okay, I'm sorry, you guys, I must...there we go. So in addition to those writing teams, the District Design Team also functions on kind of two levels. We get work started and build systems so that we can just support it in an advisory capacity. So a couple of the activities within our district that started from District Design Team, and now we still work within an advisory capacity, are the February District-wide PD for all of our teachers. We had fifty, more than fifty of our own teachers leading sessions. There's an example right there of our forensic science teacher leading a session on, how do you use forensic science across different content areas? We had our Ladensohn lecture. We also designed specific training for counselors, for secretaries, for data clerks, so it's a really well-designed day of learning for all of our staff. Another event that the District Design Team works within an advisory capacity is our Showcase of Engagement, where all of our students come out and are able to showcase some of the fine work they've been doing over the year. This year, we had six-hundred-and-fifty-seven students participate in showing off their work to the community. So another huge celebration. So I'm going to end by talking about where we're headed next year. So like I mentioned, we have teams that need to continue their work. Capstone needs to continue with their work, so there'll be a writing team. Our Partners for the Profile Communication Team will continue working on creating those experiences for our community to come into our schools. But then we've had several of those teams that have moved into an advisory function, meaning that we'll still talk about it, but it doesn't need that big lift anymore, because systems are created. This is our Showcase of Engagement, Feedback February, Induction, and our February District-wide PD. We'll still work with those, but it's not the big lift. So because we've developed systems, that lets us take on some new projects. So we're kind of going back to where District Design Team all started. And the core mission of District Design Team is, it serves as a champion for the district direction and creates vehicles for communication between and among the campus design teams, because there's a campus design team at each one of the campuses, and the district design team. So making sure that we're really cohesive in the work that we do and the direction that we're moving. So we'll go back to looking at those learning and communication opportunities and needed trainings for our campus design team, and we'll also spend some of our time working towards our community-based accountability. So that is the work of the District Design Team for this year, and I'm incredibly proud of all the work that everyone has put into this year. Big successes.
Will you remind me how many folks are on the campus design team, and then how many serve on the district team?
That's a great question. So on each campus design team, it's ten folks. It may vary slightly, but around ten. And then one member from that campus design team also serves on the district design team.
So that's not the same as the, what is that?
D E S C.
No, the other one. Just like, psych-based, thank you. It's different. Okay.
You may have some overlap, but they're different purposes and different needs.
And it's important to have different needs. Psych-based teams are about compliance and goal-setting design. Teams are about big, big thinking and really digging deep in learning, providing for adult learning on the campuses. There's a very different focus between the functionalities of those teams. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next up, we have a presentation of the A H I S D induction program and update from Dr. Frank Alvaro.
I'm just teeing that up. So this is almost like zooming in, because we are a writing team from the District Design Team, and I'm here to give you an update. Wow. This is a fancy clicker. So before I jump in, I want to just stress, remind everyone that from our 2008, 2009 strategic plan, we had induction, an induction program as part of that. And so that was, you know, ten years ago, they did a lot of work, did a great job, and they carried us through for like five to seven years. And this is kind of an example of where we were. We had lots of tasks to do over the, in the first year, lots of voluntary stuff. They did a ton of research. I know Max was on that team, a lot of folks were on that team. And over time, the District Design Team decided that we needed to pay more attention to that to see what needed to be revamped from that time, right? We're always kind of essentially a different organization from over the five-year period of time. So again, where we were likewise is a list of these various things. We had a ton of different things that we researched and got, and kind of theme at that point was, was kind of flooding the zone, like giving new employees a wide range of resources that they could choose from as they needed to. So there's a long list of those. That's where we were. What, we, and this is our design team, we had junior school principal, Ms. Ensira, the Howard principal, Susan, was on our team, high school instructional coach, Charlotte Dollett, was on the team, high school English teacher, Ben Heenan, was on the team, and Max Flores, HR coordinator, was on the team, as well as I. This was our designing team, our writing team, and we used the design process to kind of think, work backwards from the new employees and what their perspective is. What could we do to really engage them in the process, to induct them into the Alamo Heights way? So we used the design process to create engaging work, and we came up with, our big-picture thought was that, that's what it says, but it says to what I say, is that if we can get them to drink the Kool-Aid, that's our picture of success, right? That is, if they, from the first week they get, we get them, if they're like, wow, this is a special place to be, and they really get a sense of our beliefs and our core values and our profile, that's what we're shooting for. Now, in thinking about this, we had a couple, a few guiding principles we were thinking of. Well, first was the streamlining. We had a lot of different things from our own induction program, and a lot of it was helpful, but it was just a lot of moving parts. So that's number one, was the streamlining. Number two was to try to see, if we could identify a few high-leverage things to do, that would help us with the streamline process. We wanted to continue to focus on the vision and mission of the district. It's real easy as a new employee, or to have new employees, to get them bogged down into, what's the policy for getting a sub? How do I get my textbooks? Like, all of those things are important for them to know, but what's really important is to buy into our big-picture vision and mission of the district. So we didn't want to change that part of it. We wanted to make sure we were designing it with the end-users in mind, so we did a lot of time, spent a lot of time talking to new employees, like, how did it go? How did you like this? How did you not like that? And as we were retweaking this and redesigning. And then a big thing that was new to us, that we didn't have when we did the last induction program, was the Engage Classroom. And as you look at it, the way we're doing it with the responsible rollout, that's really becoming a core part of our induction into the Alamo Heights instructional way. And so we wanted to make sure that we kept that in mind as we were revamping this. So it was a big picture. What do we do? This is where we were, and as a comparison, these are a couple of things we've changed. We went from a process where every new employee had one mentor identified to them for them, to now we're identifying multiple mentors, what we're calling layers of support. So it's not going to have one person that's assigned to them, but there's also going to be a variety of other people that, one person that they can pick themselves, just when they meet, when they get here, one person that's in a different hallway, one person that's in a different grade level. We're trying to make sure they have a variety of different people that they can go to and that are also going to them to check on them. That's something that we piloted at Howard Early Childhood Center and really to a lot of positive results. And so we're going, we're rolling that out in every district. The next thing is we, and I'll show you in a second, but we created a year-long, bi-nine-week explicit check-in process, where every principal's committed to checking in with the new employees a certain number of times, and each person on these layers of support is also checking in with those folks. We implemented a summer coffee thing. We actually piloted that that year, and that is, as soon as somebody gets hired, you guys approve them, we call them for intake, they come in and they sit with Max and they do their intake. At that moment, Max tells the campus principal, hey, this person's ready to go, and someone from the campus reaches out to that person and says, hey, we're so glad you're part of the Alamo Heights, can I, we grab a cup of coffee next week sometime? And so everybody gets that throughout the summer at different times. It's just kind of a very informal way to welcome them and to kind of start generating questions they have already. And then the last thing on that list is that we recognize that we have our own in-house professional development going on already, and so we're, as soon as somebody gets hired, like, if we start hiring somebody tomorrow, do intake, we can say, hey, look, here's a calendar of things that we're already offering. If you're available or interested, you can get, hit the ground running and start doing some of our own training programs over the summer. Now, the new orientation week, the new employee orientation week, we actually piloted this past August to great success. And the big redesign was the following. We cover several things that we have to cover, but we tweaked it to make sure it was shorter and more variety. And we introduced a menu of sessions on the last two days, Thursday and Friday, in which we say, these are a variety of things. You can choose what you feel like you need to see. And that was a big success. We got a lot of great feedback from the new employees, and we also included current employees to come in and do what we called mini keynotes, which is, were a big hit. And think of how honored our current employees were, like Eric Cruz gave one, that were tapped to say, hey, we feel like you have, you have really contributed to this district since you've been new. Come talk to the new folks and pump them up about being in the district. And so he didn't mean, that teacher didn't mean keynotes. And one thing we learned from that is we wanted to video those, because they were so auspicious. Oh, somebody's like, I wish I would have been there, but I couldn't see that, I was at a different one. But those were a big hit. The other thing that we did this, that was more time on campus, so when you're a new employee, you can think about this, if I'm a new teacher, I get it, I want to know what Alamo Heights is about, but I also want to see my classroom. Go to know what my classroom is, I want to stop moving stuff into my classroom. And so there's this, this tension weighing on their head about wanting to get stuff set up versus wanting to learn about the district. And so we learned that from our interviews with new folks as we were designing this. And so what we did was, we interspersed some campus time throughout every day, whereas in the old system, we kind of kept campus time was the last two days, and they didn't have any chance to intersperse three days to really kind of cut away and start attending to the things they wanted to attend to. We got a lot of good feedback about that. It's like, so be with us for big-picture stuff, run to your classroom and attend to things. Come back and do picture stuff, and then run to your classroom to attend to things. And so that was a big breakthrough. And then building for this August is actually a physical handbook, which we got a lot of feedback from folks to say, we appreciate that things are going digital, but like, I'm new, and I want to be able to hold something to say, what was that again? And to flip back forth. And so each campus is putting together, and we also ask them, well, what do you want to see? Like, after your first semester, what did you feel like you wished you had in hand? And so based on our interviews with all the new employees, we created a list of things that they wanted to see in hand, and so every campus will have that collected for them for that first week. And then, just to keep up, though, the electronic footprint, we do, we'll have a website for them that we house those things as well. And so that'll be rolling up this time. Now, what is this idea of layers of support? Well, essentially, there are layers A through E, and E is the admin, and A is the kind of the traditional mentor, but then we layered in three other kinds of support, so they will have a grand total of at least five people that are formally supposed to be checking on them. And I don't expect you to read this list, but just know, like, there's a, this is what we think each layer should be doing to help them. And so we're looking forward to rolling that out. And like I said, Susan Perea's got great success with piloting this on her campus this year, and we'll be rolling that out with each principal at the other campuses this August. Now, when I mentioned check-ins, like, again, I don't expect you guys to read all of this, but the point is that we've identified certain high-leverage actions each nine weeks to make sure that we are actively checking in at a variety of levels with the new employees. At the bottom, is there a...nice, okay. Right here, with these micro credentials, that's another addition to our program. The idea was that, we used to do these face-to-face meetings where they came and we, there's certain content they had to get, and so we taught them all at the same time. And in feedback with the new employees, they're like, you know, that's kind of neat. I'd like to be able to do that at my own pace, at my own time, just as long as I got it done at some point. And so working with the instructional coaches, they piloted at the high school this, and I think Woodbridge also piloted it, this idea of micro credentials. So they're badges that teachers earn, they do certain things independently, and when they mark off that they do them and the coach works to make sure that they did it, a sufficient quality, they mark it as done. So they can go as fast or as slow as they, as they need to do that. That's another thing that we're rolling out at all campuses next time. Then, this year, we piloted, thought, we've got a lot of good feedback, so we're going to keep doing this, is surveying the new employees mid-year as a check-in. How's it going? What's going well? What's not going well? Who's helping you? That kind of thing. And then also an end-of-the-year survey that I just sent out a week ago, which reminds me, I need to check, I need to make sure, because they, they check them in waves, right? Because everybody's really busy, so we're like, so how, how, I want to remind folks. They're all anonymous, so I can't nag any particular person. But we had like an eighty percent response rate in the mid-year, and so I hope to have at least eighty percent of this last year. They gave us lots of good feedback about how things are going and what to tweak going forward. So the other thing we changed in terms of particular staff development is, we inserted the administrators actually walking through in different segments of time to these two big core trainings that we have. In the old days, we started doing it, we just kind of took it for granted, and so it became, it felt like it was disconnected to what they were doing on the campus. So they all would go to differentiated instructional training that the instructional coaches would do. It was great, they loved it, but we didn't do a good job of talking about it or connecting it to the campus life. And so, starting last August, we got a lot of great feedback about this. We have, each day is divided up, and there's an administrator there at thirty-minute intervals. They're there, they participate, they talk to the teachers, and then they follow up with the teachers later during their evaluation conversations about what they learned and how they're using them. Likewise with our Working on the Work two-day training. Now, what we've discovered is that we'll have a fair amount of people that are first-year employees, they're gung-ho, they've got it, and now they're applying to be part of the Engage Classroom. And so sometimes I might be going into my second year, like, I just finished my first year, and I'm already going through Engage Classroom training, which is great, and that's fine. And so for those folks, we alternate, they do their Working on the Work training, they're all of their design training the third year. Now, if they don't apply to become part of an Engage Classroom cohort, if they didn't get in this time, then they would do their Working on the Work training the second year they could get an Engage Classroom cohort last year. So that Engage Classroom cohort has really become a big deal in terms of our support. Now, the other thing that, that we didn't necessarily start doing, but we realized it was really part of our induction program, was the instructional report we give, the support we give to new employees all throughout the year. So the first thing to know is, we have instructional coaches at every campus that really support the teachers that are new to the campus. We have ongoing and regular walkthroughs, which we've told you all about before, where administrators go through, and we even kind of, we had awards last April in our principal meeting about how many walkthroughs each campus had and that kind of thing. So it's kind of competitive, like, nothing. I think, and I send out a report every two weeks to the principals, say, hey, these are your walkthrough numbers, nice job! And so you can, and there's a little friendly competition. But the point is that they're in classrooms seeing the teachers. And then we meet in October. The district administrators and the campus principal and the academic dean, we go to every campus and we mark out an hour, and we talk about every new employee, right? This is the employee, this is the, how many times I've been in the classroom, this was going really well, these are the things we want to be working on with them, this is how they're doing. So we know every new employee pretty intimately by the time October comes around, and then we do the same thing in February, where we come back and say, this is all the new employees, this is how they're doing, these are things we're working on. And then the last thing is the Engage Classroom cohort. So we feel like we do, this is really a big part of our induction support that we've been doing for several years anyway. So to recap, that was our new picture of success, drink the Kool-Aid, and those were our guiding principles. And just kind of as a big picture in terms of action items, these are, I rate them, I put them in real big font, so you can see. But kind of the big, high-leverage moves, we streamlined stuff to say, the summer onboarding was a big deal. Reconstruction week one, creating a website, creating a handbook, the year-one timeline for check-ins, the mid-year interview survey, the layers of support, and the micro credential. Those are kind of the big pictures, and we feel like those few levers move a pretty big things with our new employees. And that's it.
Can I say a framing question?
Absolutely.
So I know we always, we always see, you know, hires and that sort of thing come across our desk, but we don't always get like a whole tally. across our desk, but we don't always get like a whole tally. Like, so give me an example of the scope, like how many new employees a year are you running through induction?
Will we average 30 or 50 for the number?
Well, if you're including paraprofessionals too, I would say 50.
Okay.
Average. So some, I remember a few years ago, it was as big as 70. A few years before that, it was 40. So it just depends on, on the retirement year.
Right.
And I'd just like to kind of take us to the big framing piece of this, in that as we strive to be what Schlechte says, as a learning organization, away from that opposite end of being a bureaucratic organization, there are six critical systems that we focus all of our work and attention to, and that the district design team supports as well. This system is called recruitment and induction. And when you place a lot of attention on recruitment and induction and not on power and authority and boundary systems, you get closer and closer to that learning organization, organization place that we aspire to be. And so I just think it's important to kind of get that big picture, to understand why are we spending all this time on this? It's really important to us that we bring in high-quality staff to meet the needs of our students, but we need to support them after they're here to make sure that they're successful. And so that's what this is all about, so.
Another question. So the layers of support, you know, B, C, and D, the ones that aren't necessarily the ones, do they, do they have multiple new employees that they might cover?
Uh, it just depends. We'll, we'll see. Like, we haven't really named those yet. In Susan's case, they, but she has kind of a unique situation.
Because it's, in, in one respect, it's very, I guess need is the only word we can come up with, that when you just do the math, that is a large amount of our current employees that are mentoring new employees. And so, you know, I love that from a culture perspective. I'm, I'm also constantly aware that we continue to ask our teachers to do more and really can't give them more space to do it. And so on one end, I'm impressed and I love the culture. On the other end, I just want to make sure that we're, we're not putting too heavy a load. And I know you guys are mindful of it.
Yeah, well, one of the things that's interesting, this idea actually spurred out when you start watching the organic. So you have the assigned mentors, but when you start watching it, people start mentoring other people's just naturally. And so the layers of support actually grew out of watching what happens naturally. You start to see people start to net mentors, like, oh, well, let's kind of, let's kind of take this organic energy and mesh it together. That was the idea.
That's great.
We just had it like our Teacher Leader Academy, we had our last one today, and they, they talk a lot about mentoring folks and how that's part of just leadership and being a great teacher at Alamo Heights, is you just kind of mentor everybody, it comes along, just natural. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Frank. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And so these are items that are considered routine by the board or have previously been reviewed and discussed in power meetings. So we will enact them with one motion, but I'm first going to ask if there's anything anybody wants to pull from the consent agenda and put on the agenda. I want to point out the donations that we received. Always thankful for those. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. Can the motion be cleared? So the next item on our agenda is our committee reports, and we have two committee reports, the Alamo Heights School Foundation, Ryan Anderson, and then the building committee from Dave Humber. So Ryan, you have a meeting on May 16th?
We had one yesterday, and the MOU that we just approved on consent agenda, the foundation passed it yesterday, so we've now got to enact it. It just has to be signed by everyone. Couple of things jumped out at me, and I know we're pressed for time, so we'll go kind of quick, but I think these are important ones. They went over the budget and the numbers, and for 2019, the foundation met its goal of funding 12 teacher positions. And I think that's a huge kudos to them. And one thing I think most people out here probably don't realize, I didn't realize, and I may get the number wrong, but in the last big cuts we had to do eight years ago or so, we lost 55 teacher positions. And we haven't been able to replace them, and we haven't been able to give our teachers raises for a couple of years. These are brutal times right now. And to have the foundation come through and give us 12 teachers, I mean, I think we really owe a lot of gratitude towards them. And to the extent we see foundation members out in the community stop to thank them, because they really worked hard. And one thing I will note on this is their fundraising didn't quite get up to what they wanted it to be this year. And so Jason Menzel, and I will commend you, if you ever need a number cruncher, that guy is brilliant. But he worked the numbers again and again, very conservatively, and he recommended that they pull money from their reserves, he felt comfortable with it, to meet the total goal of funding 12 teachers, and so they voted to do that. So I'm extra grateful for them. I think that was big. For 2020, their goal is to give the district a million dollars. We're going to have to get out there and help them to raise that kind of money. And to put that in perspective, in 2009, the foundation gave $369,000. So in roughly one decade, they are tripling nearly what they gave, which is incredible. They also voted to fund the feasibility study. They've hired Mission Advancement out of Dallas, and the feasibility study is going to be for the naming rights of the new buildings, athletic complex, an auditorium, and other opportunities. They're going to fund the whole feasibility study. They think it'll be back to us in about three or four months, which should coincide nicely with when these new buildings are coming online. And then the last thing I do is I save the date, February 29th, 2020. Just get that out ahead on your calendar, is reunited Heights, and that's going to be the big alumni reunion. It's going to be at the Commons. It's going to be a lunchtime affair, but it's a chance to try the new Commons Fair and see how it is. And part of that, and this is one thing to keep in mind, because it's opening up soon, is the Alamo Heights Hall of Fame. And the nominations are going to go online June 1st, and it'll go through August 29th. That's summertime, so it's not a time when we're doing a lot of communicating with each other, but there are three categories, teachers, alumni, and then contributors. And they, the application will have everything that you need, what the qualifications are. But that is what the foundation is up to. And again, great kudos to them for a heck of a year when we needed it.
And I have to give you a shout out too, Ryan, because that MOU between us and the foundation has been in the works for, since I was on the foundation before I was on the board. So thank you for all your work on getting that hammered out, we appreciate it.
Glad to do it. They were fun to work with. It was good.
That's great. Okay, David?
So the building committee, we met on May 8th. As we communicated to you guys previously, we're kind of in this still space on the committee where a lot of projects are ongoing, and we're going to have some major bids coming in in May. We'll bid the pull-up probably twice, once for the steel structure that's going to oversee the site, and then a second time for everything else. And then that will align that project with our kind of extracurricular athletic complex, because that's a huge project too. We've got to make sure we manage both these projects together very well, to make sure the pennies all go where they need to go. One of the things I think it's incumbent to, you know, for us, the elected folks, to remind our community, you know, guys, our budget is still like in the red, and that hasn't changed. And I think a lot of people think for some reason that because we're Alamo Heights, we've got a lot of money. And I was talking to a community member just recently about some things, we're trying to figure out how to optimize certain things at the high school and other campuses, and they just said, well, why don't you just do X, Y, and Z? And I said, well, that costs money. They said, well, I know, but you're Alamo Heights. And I was like, I know, let me show you the budget, it's online, and you can see where all the money's going and why we're in the red. And I can show you the trends over time to show you that, you know, we're spending the same, the state is taking more. And so that was an eye-opener. I think we live in it, and so, you know, we're, we're very aware of it. Our community really doesn't live in it, and I honestly, I don't think they're aware of it until their children are seniors and seniors. Because, you know, you're kind of in that cocoon phase when you're elementary school and maybe in junior school. So just a reminder to all of us to continue to educate our community about where we are and how important it is that Austin gets it right for funding our schools.
So put the numbers on the table, second year of deficit?
Yes.
At 1.2 million deficit this year, frozen teacher salaries, and we sent $39 million away to the state. I just think it's important that we just keep talking those numbers, because I agree with you, David, I don't think that that's out there.
No.
And when we talk about the foundation making this kind of commitment to us, we're in a time where we really have to start thinking about the possibility of cuts. And, and the way that the foundation came alongside us, and we're such amazing community partners, helped us put off that conversation until we see what the legislative session results in, so incredibly. I don't mean to side step you there.
No, I'm glad you did, because when I first got on the board, we were operating basically at kind of zero. Right? And, and now several years in, we're at negative 1.2, and we're not spending more money. And so that's really frustrating when you're trying to run an institution.
So when we were operating at zero, it was after those cuts that he referred to?
Yeah, it was after those cuts. Yeah, that's right. So anyway, when, when it comes to everything that's going on, the kids are in the Cambridge Fine Arts Facility, Woodbridge is moving along fine, the junior school STEM building should be ready on time, y'all see the Commons going up, it's going to be great. We really hope it's a facility that our, a lot of our organizations, like the school foundation, can use to host events, because it should be pretty top-notch. And hopefully, as everything we're doing with all of our campuses, our kids will just enjoy our facilities more. I remember when I was here, you just didn't want to be on certain parts of campus. When we're trying to inspire learning, you want it, you want an environment that inspires learning, like a lot of our colleges and universities do. So we'll have more to discuss when we get some bids back, I think, later in May. So I know we're going to hear from Mike here in a minute too, so that's building committee.
Oh, I just wanted to say, I don't know if you all received the email from Doian Hamby at Cambridge, but she went into great detail about the Fine Arts Building and the music room, the acoustics, a lot of details. And it's really, I'll share that with you. It was really neat, because she just reached out to us as a board to thank us for the work that we did, and she really appreciated all the design elements. So I'm going to check that.
Okay, thank you, David. The next item on our agenda is business recommendations, and we're going to consider approval of the auditorium design. And our presenter is Mr. Mike Baker.
So before Mike and Sarah get started, I'm going to just do a little framing here and just explain how incredibly grateful I am to this Board of Trustees who has been over-the-top committed to a very thorough, thoughtful, and deliberative process to get us to where we are tonight about this exciting design we're ready to unveil. But this conversation has taken place now for over a year, and everybody around the table has their fingerprints on it. Our building committee did an incredible lift meeting, time after time after time. There was an incredible amount of research that was done all across the state. We visited multiple facilities, we talked to experts in the field, we heard from our coaches, we heard from our athletic director, we went back and forth in conversation about what are the needs of this program, what, what's important to include in this facility. We're really excited that this facility boasts a pool that's three times the size of our current pool, that when we heard from our coaches and our athletic director and our students, like, they want to entertain high-quality local competitions, but also regional competitions. And so that changed our conversations about what needed to be included in this facility. So consideration about open and closed air systems was really important, thinking about seating. So I'm really excited about the place we are, but we would not be here without you all being so conscientious and thorough. I really appreciate y'all. So unveil, we're excited.
Solid, Sarah. Before Sarah starts, let me just say, we did the steel structure today. And right now, the preliminary are about 160,000 under what they estimate was. So they're still going to describe the numbers.
So we're hopeful that it'll, will even come down a little bit more.
That's good.
Okay, so here is the Alamo Heights, I assume y'all saw that? So just to familiarize everyone, if you don't know, it's off of 281 and Tavolga. I think we're all familiar where this site is. Bonnie, do you have something you want to say?
Well, we do have people that are, can y'all hear her okay? Let's, do you mind using the mic, Sarah? We do have people that are here just for this presentation, so that'd be good.
Good idea. Okay, so. Can y'all hear me?
It'll turn green.
It's a little button there.
So this is the site for the new auditorium. It is Robbins Academy, so where the existing solar panel farm is located, that's going to be the new home for this facility. Here's a floor plan of that space. And so the program areas are the pool itself in the middle, and then the deck surrounding it, so plenty of room for activities to happen around the perimeter of the pool. Circulation is in gray, and then the locker room spaces are highlighted in yellow. So the spaces towards the bottom are public restrooms, concessions, and hospitality room, and then we have some spaces for the chlorine delivery and all the things that make the pool run. So those will happen here and have access out to the, the back area.
Really quick, just for a sense of orientation, so the, for lack of a better phrase, but the top of the screen goes towards 281 Jones-Maltzberger?
This is Jones-Maltzberger here. This is the back that, that's the neighborhood, and the tennis courts are to the bottom here, and then Tavolga to the right. So to give everyone some perspective on where the pool, how large this pool is, this is the footprint of your, well, no longer existing pool, that's been...
It's not even a hole anymore.
It's not even a hole on the ground. They have filled that void in. So almost three times the size of the existing pool, so a pretty exciting enhancement for the district. And then just some other key things to note, our spectator seating here, number three, so we can seat 400 spectators. And then just going along with the nature of the pool, we have a pretty large mechanical yard off to the right, but that will, I mean left, but that will be screened from public view. And then there's a basement underneath this portion as well, for a lot of the different sand filters and things that require maintenance. And there's a well to get into those, which is this number nine, so they'll be able to lift equipment in and out through that area. So a pretty complicated structure that we're building here. Just to give some idea of all of the different events that can take place in this pool, we have a 25-meter course right out here, so there will be a bulkhead that can be used to separate portions of the pool, so there will be warm-up lanes, and then this 25-meter course. We'll have 25 yard courses available with diving to the left will be used in that bulkhead. Some warm-up areas with a 25-yard course. We can house a 25-meter water polo. And apparently that's a lot that we're showing. Yeah, we have some other scenarios too, but Mike cut me short. So lots of different flexible configurations that we can use. And you can also use the bulkhead, and it will be able to have the platforms that can be mounted to that bulkhead, so you can start from different areas of the pool as well. Here's a rendering from standing close to Tavolga, looking at the main entry of that auditorium, so using brick and some translucent panels to let light in, glass, and just trying to bring some nice color, Alamo Heights colors into the building as well. One of the major things that we're having to do with the site is because of the parking that we're adding, we have to add detention as well as this roof area that we're adding. So this area off to the right here is for detention, so water will be able to be held there and then slowly released back into, the stormwater systems are hopefully just filtered, filtered down through the earth and not cause any water issues.
So it won't be a concrete retention, it'll just be natural?
It'll all be natural. So if you remember where we're at before, we had a lot of parking spaces, and it was a more severe slope. So we were able to shallow that up, and I think it'll be a nice, a nice area. So here's a view just looking at that locker room space behind Mike Blazey, so highlighting some of the Alamo Heights colors there. And then off to the left is the main entry under that covered canopy. Again, this is the translucent panels that will let some natural light into that pool area, but not the glare, because the swimmers are very conscientious of public glare and the reflection off of the water, so that will help give some dappled light into those areas. Then just knowing how these very long swim meet days go, there's areas for the kids to spill out of that pool and put up their lawn chairs and tents and hang out outside in between when their meets might happen. So are there particular events so that an outdoor area is available for that use, and it's covered as well? Here's another view from that. So this is standing along Jones-Maltzberger. We will have a fence along this to help keep the kids in and other people out, but it ruined our rendering shots. We eliminated it for this view, but there will be a wall, not a wall, but a fence along there to protect the students. This is from that northeast corner, looking back at that camera area. And so that's the mechanical yard here, and it will be behind a screened area. So here's from the diving board end of the swimming pool, looking across, we will have a large TV or a jumbo, I don't know what you call the jumbo trailer, but a large TV-like apparatus that will be in the pool area. And one of the ideas was that this could be used for the community, for a lock-in, for a swim, swim-in, I think they call them, so you could play a movie on there and have some of your events at this facility as well. And then off to the right here is the spectator area. So there's that view of the spectator area. So one comment we did get from the building committee when we were presenting this is that, would it be great if this area was more opened up? Because this is looking back into the reception area. So we have, we haven't updated the rendering yet, but we have studied that, and so there will be a lot more glazing, so that when you come in, you'll actually get to see the pool and experience that up from the reception area.
And I know you're also, or at least Jennifer's in the loop, talking about how we can put banners up, celebrate teams that have won titles and that kind of thing.
Absolutely. So these walls will eventually be covered with banners, lauding the team as they change.
Do we have some swimmers worth mentioning?
Yeah, some diving, and all sorts of things.
Rise out.
And so the spectator section, I mean, which I think is the right thing, there's no step down into the deck?
Correct. So one of the things we heard from the athletic director and all the different coaches that we spoke with is having that separation between the parent types and the kids is important. And so we still have, it's a glass rail, so that you can get the sidelines that you need, but it is elevated, so it's several feet higher. And we will have some tilted roll bleachers that sit here for the swimmers to sit on, on the deck itself, but that separation between spectator and swimmer was important.
And that's room for 400, was that the number?
400, yes, sir. So with that, we're adding about 100 additional parking spaces to the facility. And so, like I said, that helps reduce how much water that we had to retain or detain on the site. We have one meter and three meter diving ports, and the pool slopes from three and a half feet at the shower end, makes its way to four and a half feet, and then eventually seven and a half, seven and a half feet for the majority of the pool. So you'll be able to have different...
But the diving's deeper.
Oh, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We don't want kids to dive in there. Yes, it goes deeper at the diving. And we'll be able to have different swim levels, and different training or anything happen at the different levels of depth throughout this space. So are there any additional questions?
I have a question.
Wait, hold on one second.
Oh, sorry.
Because it's a board meeting, though, unfortunately, it's got their presentation now, so that's okay. But after the meeting, or another time, I would love to hear your questions, and I know the board will, too. So we'd love to hear, but we just gotta keep it cool.
Okay.
So Sarah, talk about the deck space. That was another, like, big push, you know, we needed a lot more deck space than what we have.
Right, so we have a lot of deck space around the entire perimeter of the pool, and so a lot of the training events can happen, or the training sessions that the students need will happen around the perimeter. And then if you'll notice here on the lower left, we have room for a trampoline. So the divers will be able to have the harnesses and do their practicing there on the deck as well, and then that can be moved if other things need to happen as well. So tremendous amount of deck space around the entire facility. And then you'll notice this little notch here, we do have a lift to help people who are in a wheelchair or have some other disability to get into the pool for any sort of locker therapy or other need.
And you know, we didn't really talk through the flow of the locker rooms. Maybe go back a few and show the locker rooms and...
Sure. So whenever you enter the building, you come into a reception area, and then if you come up this way, there's a ramp that gets you up to that spectator area. So those will be built in on the main doors. And then off of that area, we have public restrooms. Then also from the same area, we have a concession area, so you can come, you can draw it off. And then, once you're checked in, if you're a private, I mean, if you're a member of the public, you'll be checked in, and then you can come in and use that, the public pool. There are some deck showers here, so you can rinse off. And then we also have added another deck shower back here for the divers, whenever they come out of the pool, they can rinse off. We have a hospitality room here, so that can be used for visiting coaches, or if you have some sort of event, that's a great place to set up. And that will be on the same level as the pool, whereas these spaces here are elevated at this spectator level. And then you go through this hallway back here, and that was that yellow wall that you saw in the front of the building, and this takes you into the two locker rooms. So we have boys' and girls' locker rooms, so it has actual changing spaces here. We have extractors to bring the water out of the swimsuits into those. We have individual shower stalls on both sides, and then toilet facilities here. And then this is a coach's office, and so that has view onto the pool from that coaching area. So from this area, you can come in, suit up, and enter right onto the deck. Now, where was the area that you pointed out that you all are gonna put some additional illumination onto the... So we're opening up this through the hospitality area, so there will be more glazing here and here. So whenever you come in, you'll be able to catch that glimpse of the water just through there.
Sarah, can you talk about that air quality?
So because of the chemicals that are inherent to a pool, chlorine and other bad chemicals tend to just kind of lay on the top of the water. So we were very conscientious about our air system that we have in there, and so the air exchanges and making sure that the windows get washed with the air and that we're constantly moving air across the top of that pool of water there, so that we don't get any sick kids, or, yeah, you don't get, you don't inhale too many of those bad chemicals. So that was a huge aspect of this design as well.
Any other questions? Well, we appreciate all your work, because I know that this has been a very long process and a lot of back and forth.
And a labor of love for everybody.
Oh, good. That's good to hear. That's very good to hear.
And just since we're going to be asked to approve this particular design, and I know you had coaches and swimmers involved, but the coaches have signed off on this, haven't they?
Yes, and actually, we shared this presentation with Jennifer Rowan, and she shared it with the team, and they came back with some comments about just the type of starting blocks they want and some other items, and so we've taken that all into consideration.
But nothing, what we're approving, they've approved, so we're giving them...
Except for that additional glazing, which they haven't seen yet either, but...
It'll be a nice surprise.
Thanks for that lead in. So do I have a motion to approve the auditorium design?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right. If I have questions, or if people have questions, they can get in touch with us.
So if any of y'all have any questions, or you can always reach out. They're happy, you guys can stop me on the street.
Or I'm happy to meet with y'all, too. So please know that I'm happy to set up room around the table to ask questions and meet some people. We're really excited about this, so I hope you are, too.
You're welcome to leave if you aren't about to talk about the calendar, which is super exciting, so if you want to sit down for that, you're welcome to. But if you guys want to leave, you're welcome to. Bye. Thank you.
Okay, so Emma has some final May days for us and June days coming up. And so I do want to highlight that tomorrow, we are having a Robbins graduation, and it is always nice if you are able to pop by. It's a really special time for those students that have worked really hard to get to that point in their high school career, and those are always pretty quick. So it says it starts at 11:15. I really feel like you'll be out by 11:35. If you stop by, park, come on in, and get to kind of watch the graduates walk through the hallway, it's a really sentimental, emotional kind of experience. And that will be our final one.
She might have one on Tuesday.
She might have one more. Okay, so these are kids like trying to get over, right? So to be announced, I'll let you know in the update if we have another one, too. Eighth grade graduation will be at the junior school on Monday, Backglory at Tuesday, Wednesday. Please mark your calendars for our lunch, senior exit interviews. And then later that evening, we will all be together at the graduation ceremony at Trinity. You do have a sheet of paper in your folders that gives you access into the auditorium without a ticket.
Don't lose it.
So don't lose it. Your name's on it. Hold it tight. So another thing about graduation, if you have a family member that you would like to present diplomas to, or God sent, someone that's really close to you, not just friends of the family, and we always get this talk every year, if you would please email Emma, because it helps in just the planning, and let her know who. We've heard from some past trustees at this point, too, and some of you who've let us know that you are going to present diplomas, it kind of all goes through Emma, so that they're ready for that. And then GNP, Wednesday, June 12th, regular board meeting, June 20th, 6:00 p.m. And then we always need to host a special call meeting in July. July 5th is the last day for employees to resign, and so we host a meeting, a special call meeting. And so I need to know if we have enough people that would be in town July 3rd to have a quorum for that meeting. So Brian, it looks like you're in?
Yeah.
And it's fast. It's 30 minutes at the most.
I don't know yet.
Okay, so is anybody else?
Yeah, let's know the more.
Just a second, I think I'm okay.
If we can get four to say, okay, so I have Ryan.
I'm gonna be okay. I'm gonna miss the meeting on the 12th, June 12th, GNP.
Ryan and Brian are a yes. Nobody else is a definite yes.
And Margaret.
Margaret, okay. We need one more, so I'll wait to hear from you, David, tomorrow, Perry.
Maybe Perry.
And you're a maybe.
I'm a maybe. I don't know yet. We haven't made...
Frank, are you in town?
I'm here.
Okay, because I am, so I'm taking the kids to camp that day. Thanks.
You're on it.
All right. Great, to be continued, to let you know officially when that special call meeting will be in July.
We do it normally around one stop, don't we?
Yes, we do it. And David, you'll be out by 12:30.
Okay, next item is Dana's superintendent communication.
All right, so I'm just gonna talk you through our last session of the Future Ready Superintendent Leadership Network and the work that we did there. And if you go forward to the next slide. I was privileged for this session to actually be one of the superintendents. There were three of us that were the designers of this experience, and the experience was all about future-ready leadership and what that means. All of the work of the superintendent network is around furthering the work of the vision document, transforming public schools to be the schools that our students deserve, around 12 different principles. And so on day one, Jimmy and Frank and Cordell actually joined me in this experience in Georgetown for those, that day and a half. We really dug deep with superintendents and with other central office leaders about the definition of what future-ready leadership really is, what that looks like in our schools at a variety of levels. And so we had panel discussions, we had board members come from Georgetown and engage in what future-ready leadership looks like at the board level. We had a superintendent panel that I got to participate on with four other superintendents. Frank facilitated at central office kind of leadership level what future-ready leadership looks like at that level. And we had a principal panel as well, that Cordell actually participated in. When we talk about future-ready leadership, we go back to the teachings, the learnings around Schlechte. When we talk about capacity standards, where do we invest our efforts? Where do we invest in high-leverage areas to kind of move the needle in the district? And so the three capacity standards that we talk about and we learn about when we think about future-ready leadership, future orientation, direction and focus, and strategic action. And so what was great about this experience, and we heard great feedback, was that day one was learning. We went out to some campuses and we saw how some future-ready leadership impacted the work that's taking place there in Georgetown. But we also, on day two, had time to get around the table together as a team and think through what our focus on the future, what our strategic action needs to be. And when you think about this work, you do need to make a commitment to this moral imperative to step up into action. You know, there's one thing to learn about it and think about these big ideas that we would like our schools to look like in a way that we'd like to meet student needs, but without the opportunity as a team to think about how you would step up into action, this work doesn't go anywhere. And so that second day, our Alamo Heights team got to get around the table and really think about where we are as a district, and then we had to have some collaborative conversations with other districts and share and go through some protocol conversations about the way that we can continue to move the needle and keep the momentum going. And so I'm gonna share with you the work and kind of what our thoughts are in moving forward in this work. And so if you go on to the next one, Emma, I'm clicking on mine.
Okay.
So where are we and where are we going? And it's important to kind of go back to 2009, when we rolled out the strategic plan, an incredibly collaborative process that involved 252 community members at the time to really think about the work we're doing. But we thought about it in a system spacing way. We thought about what structures and what systems needed to change in order to start this important work. And then we moved into the profile of a learner in 2015. This was a different experience. It, too, was very collaborative in nature. We had about 40 people that came around the table to think about, if this is the changes that we made in our systems and structures, what does it need to look like for kids in the classroom? And so very specifically, we articulated the profile of a learner that identifies for us what our hopes and aspirations are for our students upon graduation, so that they can go out and positively impact the world. And that was nice. We had that articulated, but then we needed a new phase of planning to think about, so how do we actualize this for kids every day in every classroom? And so you'll see examples of Blueprint for Learning, our Healthy Sense of Self, and the way that we utilized instructional coaches for the first time to come around our teachers and support them in that blueprint to those engaged classrooms. And so that's where we are. And we committed to a five-year responsible rollout plan with this initiative. Next year, we'll mark year four in that plan. And so it's a nice opportunity for us to step back and kind of analyze and measure the work that we've done and say, you know, how well is this working for us? And in an effort to look towards the future, what do we need to do to continue the momentum? And so I'm gonna have you click forward. We are committing next year, beginning in the fall, to a partnership with Schlechte. They'll work as consultants to us in this process, but we're calling it a strategic action process. And it will take us from October until January of next year to go through a very deliberative, again, collaborative experience with the community to really think about what goals we need to focus on right now to continue this important work. And so just identified for you on the screen are just some of the steps. We'll have a large discovery group. We're gonna really rely on you as trustees to help us identify people that would be helpful with that, probably a group of 50 to 60, so not as widespread as how we started the last time we did strategic planning, to really think about what capacities do we need to develop within our system to get this worked in. We'll move on to a needs assessment process under number two, where we really will tap into a wide variety of community stakeholders in these focus group experiences. And Schlechte will help us run those focus groups, so that's a real objective experience, where we get a lot of information. We're gonna be using the February feedback data as an important piece of that, too. From that, we would go to a small group, and the small group will be, I'm on number three here, the, some administrators, we'll have some community members. We're gonna ask, we have named the board members, Lisa and Brian are gonna help us with some of this work, to really think about where we were in number one and what's the gap analysis of where we need to go. Come back to that large discovery group under number one when we come back in November. We'll hear from them about how we're distilling these conversations about the direction that we're going. And then in January, an action planning group will come around three to four goal areas and talk about what our action steps are to kind of actualize that work. And so it's a more streamlined experience than what we rolled out when we partnered with Cambridge Strategic Services, but we're at a very different place right now. And so you can see that we're really committed to continue conversations with the community about continuous improvement. But we've got a lot of good work that's taken place, that's transformed our systems, that's transformed the work that's taking place in the classroom, and this is gonna help us just continue that momentum and launch us into future years. So that was fast. Questions that you all have for me about this work? You can see we're gonna hit the ground running when we get back to school. So this summer, we're gonna really tap into you as trustees to help us identify some people that would be great thinkers and a diverse representation of our school district.
Good work. All right, so the next thing is personal recommendations, so we'll move into executive session before we discuss that. So if there are no objections, we're gonna take a short break before we go into executive session per Texas Government Code, Section 555.001.